Let's call this meeting to order. Due discussion of fossil action to approve the minutes of the July 22nd, 27th special meeting.
Mr. Chairman, the minutes are in your backup. Just for your information, I believe that you and Commissioner Boring were the only two here that were in attendance. Mr. Curtis was out and Mr. Elblander was not yet appointed to the board. So I would suggest that the two of you that were here could go ahead and review and approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll hold favor.
Aye. All right. Passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item three, discussion of amending current ordinances dated 1998 and advising to be current with the new ordinances.
Mr. Chairman, this item was added to the agenda at the chairman's request. And if you or Commissioner Boring would like to talk about introducing this item, that'd be fine if we have any questions about it. We understand that this item has to do with the 1998 zoning ordinance, which we have. And if the item is to talk about changes that have been made to that document, we can certainly talk about that. As part of your handouts, as not in your booklet, but also part of your handouts, I've provided you copies of the ordinances that have been adopted since the adoption of the Conferencing Plan. Now, only one of those was an amendment to the zoning ordinance. The other was, the other three, four were not. So with that background, Mr. Chairman, if you want to introduce the item, then we'd be happy to answer any questions that we could answer.
Okay. Well, this was brought to me by Austin. So Austin, do you have any discussion concerning that?
I have multiple concerns with our current system because currently, a lot of our builders and contractors that are coming into town, quite frankly, have no idea what direction to go. We have a 1998 document that has guidelines, zoning, even shows building guidelines. I believe, I was trying to find that, I requested today, November 29th of 2012, we adopted parts of the 2009 International Residential Code, but not to its entirety.
Now, if I could speak to that, Mr. Boring, just really quickly, that is not part of the zoning ordinance. The international regulatory code and the international building code is part of the building. That's the building code. That's not part of the 1998 ordinance. That is part of the agenda.
What I'm suggesting is, I believe that this city needs to find a way to integrate the zoning ordinance in with a building code because right now, nobody can tell you what's what.
Can I, I'm prepared to take you through that if I could take, if I could do a little presentation for you.
One other thing I'd like to comment, though, is with the adoption of this 2009 IRC, currently, we are behind Oklahoma standards, which I don't approve of in the first place. But currently, Oklahoma has adopted 2015 IRC standards.
Well, let's address that first. Now, as part of the items that I put on your chair in front of you, when we adopted the 2000, when we adopted the 2009 code in 2012, we did that in 2012. So we are, we're three years behind doing that. Okay? So in 2012, we officially adopted the 2009 code. Now, the state has adopted the 2015 code. And so we are looking for, we will amend, do an ordinance and amend ours to update that. So I guess historically, and in most cities, that's not unusual. But again, that's with the IBC building code. We understand that that needs an ordinance to be done. Now, when it comes to the 1998 code and we're in the year 2017, going to 2018, Mr. Boring, I totally agree with you. The 1998 code, 20 years later, we frankly don't live in that world anymore, I think. And I think it is time to take a look at the code and all of our other ordinances as well. Not just the zoning code, but the subdivision code, building code, landscaping, building set back, all the things that we have in our 1998 code, it's time to take a look at that and it's time to review it. And the way, the strategy that we're going to use to do that is, under our Conferencing Plan, under the Action Plan, the first thing that we are supposed to do is to do a Unified Development Code. That's exactly what it sounds like. Now, in your backup, I gave you an example of a table of contents of a unified, of a Unified Development Code. If you go to your tab for this item, I made a copy of the City of Altus, Oklahoma Unified Development Code. And if you just look at that table of contents, you see what a Unified Development Code does. It not just has zoning districts, it has land uses, district and bulk standards, subdivision and land design principles, streets, utilities, drainage, parking, loading, and access to sign code, procedures and decision-making. You can read that table of contents. And today, I can tell you that these items are in different ordinances. Some are in the zoning ordinance. Some are in the subdivision code and other codes that we look at on a day-to-day basis are in that book. The parking standards are, some are in that book, some are in this book. There are uses that we don't have any parking standards at all. So I think that tells us it's time to look at everything as a whole and integrated. So we are going to take that approach. And I think what we can, the other thing that we can look at while we're going through this process is that after the Unified Development Code table of contents, I think what this board, what staff is going to do with this board is to do a work session. I think we need to do a training session to see how we can do a Unified Development Code. Now, today, we have what is called a cumulative zoning ordinance. It's just like it sounds. You can look at the zoning ordinance, C2 allows all C1 uses plus additional C2 uses. That's a cumulative zoning code. The style of code that we have is one that's probably used by 90, 95% of jurisdictions in America. All the zoning, all the zoning districts that we think of, R1, R2, R3, C1, C2, PUD, light industrial, heavy industrial, those, that's typical for what a zoning ordinance is. But when we look through this Unified Development Code, you've got some other ways to go about this. You don't have to do it that way, and that would be a good policy discussion to have when we get that far. We can look at other types of codes. We can look at performance standards instead of this type of code. Briefly, and we'll save this for the training session, but briefly, what that means, instead of looking at the code and going, oh gee, this property is zoned R2, it allows this, it allows this, it allows this, but it doesn't allow this use and this use. Well, there are some towns and cities that have said, well, that's a little antiquated. Maybe there's a better way to go about it. And what they do is look at performance standards. Not so much the use, but what the building looks like, how it's designed, how it's compatible with the surrounding area. Not so much use, but different types of standards. We've also all heard the term smart growth and smart growth ordinances.
David, not to stop you, but clarification of what you just stated there.
Yep.
You've got a building that exists in a particular area that's been there for a long time. Are you, are you stating that you're going to put pressure on those owners in a way that it's going to have to enhance the area?
No.
Due to the codes you're going to implement?
No, not at all. Now, in today's code, we have non-conforming uses and non-conforming structures. Okay? So you can have a property that's C2 that might have a residence on it. Okay? Well, that's a non-conforming use. Okay? Now, we could also have a building that is zone C2, that's a commercial use, but the building is non-conforming. So you can continue to do that and you can continue that use for good, however long you want, until it gets time to change it. Or until, let's say, a fire would happen. Let's say you have a non-conforming, your building catches fire.
They're going to enforce the codes on it.
Yep, you could only, yes. There's only a certain percentage that you could rebuild. Or any new building would have to have that use. So I guess in summary, to go back to what I'm trying to say, there are different ways to do this. Not just a cumulative code, there are form-based codes, there are, there are performance standards codes. And those are things that we can take a look at doing. And when we do the unified code, there are unified codes that have zoning, subdivision, all the things that you think of in terms of a zoning code, but they include their building codes as well in the unified code. And certainly, when we, when we start to look at this process and going down that road, we can look and see if that's what we want to do. So I guess in summary, that's our task for the next year.
Well, I have a couple of questions about this. It's my understanding this zoning ordinance that we operate as a planning and zoning commission in the direction of this ordinance, is that correct?
Yes, and the Conferencing Plan as well.
That just got implemented.
And the subdivision regulations.
Now, in this zoning ordinance, also, it's my understanding as a duty of the, as a board member of this commission, that we have input into how this book is established and the material that's in it. Is that correct?
In terms of changes, amendments, that kind of thing?
So my next question is, when, well, let me preface that. Currently, in this zoning ordinance, we have assigned ordinance in here consisting of six pages.
We did assign ordinance, yes, sir.
Why isn't the planning commission was not brought in and was able to debate and give its input as to this new ordinance?
Pros and cons of the issue.
Okay. Through you, Mr. Chairman, is that, can I?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. I guess the answer to that is, is because you never, this board never really has anything to do with the sign code. You never see it.
But if we, if we operate under the direction of this ordinance, and we are part of the panel that is supposed to give suggestions and make changes and amendments and so forth, why isn't, why weren't we brought in on it? Because that's a direct reflection as to how we operate.
Again, the, the signed ordinance comes into place in a couple ways. One is that if somebody brings in a site plan for a new development, they have to bring us a sign code, they have to bring us a sign plan. Those do not come before you. Site plans do not come before the Planning and Zoning Commission, so that's a ministerial function. So it is our job to make sure that the standards of the code are followed. Now, if the standards of the code are not followed, and let's say if somebody wanted to put a sign up that was 40 feet in height instead of 35 feet, that would not come before you, that would come before the Board of Adjustment. And it would not go to City Council because variances to the zoning code go to the Board of Adjustment, or if it's appealed, it goes directly to court. It does not come here and it does not come to City Council. So I guess, Commissioner Boring, that's the answer I guess I would have.
Well, we don't have a Board of Adjustments any longer, and so that probably won't be any kind of consideration, but I want to ask you a specific question.
Can you speak up into the microphone, Mr. Purvis, just a little bit?
Yeah, I can. Hopefully you'll hear me. Is it on? Okay. You said that the Planning Commission wouldn't be involved in checking site plans, and that a site plan would be, the initial contractor came in and gives you plans, and so you're going to approve it prior to hitting the Planning Commission for evaluation of a site plan?
If a property is zoned C1.
And they're going to do a C1 project?
And they're going to do a C1 project.
Okay.
They would come in with a site plan.
Okay.
And we would call a meeting of staff to make sure, everybody would get a copy of the site plan, and then we would sit down with the applicant and go, okay, Parks Department, are we all okay in conformance to your ordinances? I would take a look at it in terms of the zoning, we would have, we would have streets there as well, we would have the fire department. And if it met all the standards of the code, that would be approved, that would be an approved site plan, and then his, his next task, his next step in the process would be to bring construction plans in to the building official, who would then hold a pre-construction meeting to make sure that we nip as many problems in the bud upfront as we can. That's the process. So those are things that never come here. Now, if.
Well, granted, with your comprehensive plan that's on the agenda and this zoning map thing that I ran into personally, I'm concerned that we don't have a lot of areas zoned for things that we should have had it zoned for, okay? Or in a better way to say it, we have all these generalities which were increasing the densities and all these on your comprehensive plan, but say that you had, somebody came in and they want to do a C3 project and a C2 thing, now that would fall before the zoning commission, right? And depending on what it is.
Sure. If somebody, if somebody came and wanted to go from R1 to C1, that would come before you.
And I would say this because I deal with a little bit of real estate, so I know a lot of the things, and I thought I knew the zoning presently, which we found to be in there, which is kind of surprising, which I'd be wanting to bring up to my other partners here, the commissioners. But if they come in and we don't have any, traditionally, we don't have enough areas designated for certain projects. Let's use the apartments, for example, okay? And if you don't have that, you know they're going to have to come up and try to get a rezon, okay? Then you're going to confront the 300-foot and the participants in the area, neighbors and on and on. You're going to address it like we have in the past, okay? But with the comprehensive plan, if we go in there, and I've got to pull down, what do you need?
I just can't, I'm just having trouble.
Oh, I got you. Well, I speak kind of softly sometimes, still get fired up. The, we don't have enough places where we are not going to be able to have everything designated for a certain zone. You know and I know this is a fact, that just about anybody that wants to come into Gaiman, they're probably not going to find an already zoned area for their intended use, okay? We just had this thing go down to where we were going to make planned unit development. I've done several of them, and so I'm familiar with how we do that. But the first thing is, you've got to zone it specifically for that, wouldn't matter if it was R1, R2, C1, or C2. You know, that's a specific thing that'll be an entity by itself, okay? But I'm trying to think that if we've got our comprehensive plan in gear, that in a way, that comprehensive plan is going to be designating areas that the city deems necessary. And I consider that a zoning priority per se.
Okay.
And I don't think that in some of these cases, kind of referring some of what Austin's brought up, is that a lot of these things that seem to be coming and being addressed aren't getting the opinion, maybe not even of the City Council, you know? And I welcome Chet being here, and usually, you know, I try to get feedback from some council guys before we start proceeding.
Okay. Let me try to answer your question, Mr. Curtis, at a Vermont base, just, just tell me, from what I understand. Now, we just adopted a future land use map as part of the comprehensive plan.
I'm working on that.
Okay? So whenever we have a rezoning come in, as we would have had tonight, had it not have been withdrawn, let's just use that as a hypothetical, or, or from C1 to, somebody wants to go from R2 to C2.
C1.
Okay? First thing we would do, we would, I keep this on my desk every day, okay? A lot of comprehensive plans get thrown on the shelf, and I was determined that's not going to happen with the, I, every decision we make, I look at this every day.
Can I interrupt you right quick?
Okay, so.
Can we construe that the comprehensive plan could also be understood as a master plan for the city?
Yes, that's your guiding document, yes.
Okay, carry on.
This, that's, that's the guideline, the blueprint for what the city wants to do in 10 to 20 years, and then what we do, at least on a five-year basis, is address it. Because if there's one thing we know, things aren't going to quite go according to plan. So that's why we address it every five years to make sure, oh, okay, on the future land use plan map, did we get this, well, let's go back and readdress that. Or if we need to do it before that, if we're starting to have problems, we could do that.
See, that sounds like we're.
It's an evolving.
Yeah. And who are the parties at that point that you're talking to to get that consideration and that involved?
Can I interrupt you all?
Well.
I want to go to State Statute, Chapter 1147, 106, General Powers and Duties of the Planning Commission. Since we have adopted a comprehensive plan, and I'm going to bore you a little bit, part of our duty as the Planning Commission as set forth by the state is to have some say in all maps, plaits, charts, descriptive matter that will show the commission's recommendations for development of the territory, including among other things, general location, character, extended streets, viaducts, subways, bridges, waterways, waterfronts, boulevards, parkways, playgrounds, squares, parks, aviation fields, and other public ways, grounds, and open spaces, and the general location of public buildings and other public property, also the removal, relocation, winding, narrowing, vacating, abandonment, and change of, or extension of any of the foregoing ways, grounds, open spaces, buildings, and property, and so forth, so on. You get my point?
Yes, sir.
So, in other words, we should have some say in this.
Well, you do, that's all within your, that's all.
So why didn't we have any say in the sign?
That's all, all the things you read are certainly things that would come before your board. If you, if we have, if we have a rezoning that comes before the board, that comes before you, and those are, those are land use issues. So if somebody goes from R2 to C2, there's no requirement for them to give us a site plan. Because what you're looking at are land uses. You're not, you're not looking at that point at the specific, at the specific, you know, properties.
Well, with that being said, I have another problem with that because it was just introduced to the City Council, an annexation of a property that would also change the zoning, that didn't come before our commission either.
Annexations are under, under statute as well. Annexations, when they are, when an annexation is submitted, it's submitted through the city's, city attorney's office. He does an ordinance for City Council, and then what the code says is that normally, it's brought in as R1, but at the option of the council, the council can adopt, the council can bring it in, any zone it sees fit, as long as it's, as long as it's conforming to the comprehensive plan. Annexations go directly to council, they do not come before Planning Commission.
Well, it has to be zoned, does it not?
Yes, yes, that's, that's part of the annexation.
Well, to me, according to how I'm comprehending the State Statute, I think the Planning Commission should have some say in that.
And the.
Before it goes forth to City Council.
And what the State Statute says is, they bring in, the City Council designates the zoning district that it is, after the annexation is done, they designate what zoning is on the property. Maybe I'm not, annex, the process for annexation, it goes to the clerk, it goes for the city, it goes to the city attorney, he provides the ordinance, that goes to direct the City Council.
I'm going to be blunt, what is the point of this Planning Commission?
Well, you have a big job. There's a lot that.
I don't see it.
Well, okay, there's a lot that Planning and Zoning Commissions, that Planning and Zoning Commissions do. You are an advisory board to the.
Who are we advising? Because we're not advising nothing. We haven't advised anybody for six months.
Well, we have three rezonings that I know of that came here in the last six months that came before Planning Commission, and that went to City Council. One is this building, one of those, the old City Council building, and we did that before you. When we did the, we did the comprehensive plan, that was all done through Planning Commission. And you being an advisory board to the City Council, you listened, you listened, you listened to staff, you looked at the document, you took public input, and you, as a Planning Commission, recommended to the City Council what to do with the Conferencing Plan. When it comes to every item that's in the comp plan, that is within your purview. Whenever we have land use issues like this coming for you, you're going to take a look at that. When we do a downtown plan, you will take, you, that's you when we do that. And you will take a look at the documents, you will take a look at the stuff, you will take a look at that, and as part of your duties as an advisory board to the City Council, you're going to flesh out issues, you're going to take a look and see if it's being done in the right way, and you're going to tell us, no, we don't think that's done right, we don't think that's done right, we should come back and give us, make amendments and come back. You're also going to be here for members of the public. So when we do the corridor plan, we're going to do, by the comprehensive plan, we're going to do a corridor study on four. We're going to do one on 12, we're going to do one on 54, we're going to do one on 64. Those will come before you, and then you will have public hearings, you will take input from the citizens, and you will make a recommendation to the City Council of what to do for those corridor plans. Same with the downtown improvement district. We're starting to work on a downtown improvement district right now. We're trying to look at redoing Main Street. We've got, we are going to be doing an overlay district for where the casino is going to go. I'm working on that right now to get a draft overlay district to you. All those things are why you're here.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but haven't we done a preliminary plan to the soccer complex? Hasn't that been introduced to the public?
We have not. The soccer complex is in the concept stage. So we have gotten public input on that, and we have hired a consultant to help us flesh through what is the best, for this community, what is the best way to go about the soccer complex.
Get me back to my point, I don't think.
So we're going to have to, we're going, we are going to have to rezon that property.
I don't think this council and this commission needs a consulting group to tell the city what it needs and doesn't need. I think that's the direct purpose of our City Council and our Planning Commission and our Board of Adjustments. This is why we are where we are, is by hiring outside consultation.
Well, we do that for expertise. We do that because these, when we put out an RFP or an RF, an RFP or an RFQ, we're looking for people who have expertise in that area that could give us different ideas on what, what plan of attack, what, what kind of facility we need to have. And that is, sometimes, you have to go outside for that expertise. That's, that's why we do that. Now, let me.
Well, I can tell you this right now, and I think we're getting a little off subject, I don't think these outside consultants have expertise to the fact that this soccer complex is being potentially built next to an elevator system that has pigeons that crap all over that field and. all over that field and constantly, it could be a potential health hazard to our children.
Well, I think we're getting two things, Commissioner Boring, I think we're getting a tiny little bit far afield of what the item on, on the agenda was, but I can tell you is that, that property was donated to the city by the Nash Foundation for, for the purpose of putting a soccer complex on it. Now, when we look at doing that, we are going to take all those items into consideration to make sure that it can operate properly as a soccer complex, and can be operated within the public health, safety, and welfare of the people who are going to be out there, as well as the citizens, as well. Everything you do, everything the planning commission does, and anything the city council does in terms of land use planning, zoning, subdivision ordinances, making sure the grass is cut, all those things are done to make sure we maintain the health, safety, and welfare of our people. So, so, you ask what was being done for the 1998 zoning ordinance, that it's out of date, it's got, it's got some holes in it, it's got some, some things that we need, really need to address and look at, I've told you exactly what we're going to do. We're not only going to update that, we're going to update all our regulatory criteria, put them in one unified code, you're going to see it, we're going to go over it line by line, we're going to look at how it's organized, and all that is going to come before you.
You also need some comment?
I'm going to get back to the zoning thing, you know, I think Austin's point is, we, we think that the planning commission needs to be involved a little bit more before it goes through the council letter, for the protection of the city, but also for the future projection of what we're going to do. Instead of, some of the things that have happened have just been happened, and now we deal with it. And that's the way with a lot of city entities, let me carry on, because I want to get to this deal, you knew I was going to bring it up. Okay, so when I'm meeting with you this morning on that.
Yes, sir.
I was enlightened, and Marissa, I'm going to have to bring this up to you and bring you into it, I've got a, I've got a zoning map that I've had on my wall in my office, everybody that's been in my office has seen it, it's huge, looks just like this with the city of Guymon stamp on it, okay? When I approached today, I noticed the other day when I went to their, my planning partners knew this, that I saw this one around, and it had some stain marks down here, like water stains, and I've had enough flooded houses and properties that I know where that came from, and I said, well, wow, where's that? And it was from GAE Incorporated, which is an engineering firm that I dealt in construction with, okay? So, I knew who it was, and it was a previous one, and here was the zoning key, et cetera. And what kind of got me is that this map that I passed out to developers, residential people, na, 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 you know, I've passed out tons of them for years, okay? And Marissa and David both informed me that this was never adopted by the city of Guymon, okay? And that this one, because that one wasn't adopted, which I haven't clarified, and this just hit me today, so I don't know if that's right. And so, yes, I need to get into that, and with the help of the council, maybe I can find where, if this ever came up for vote, it's probably going to be around the date that this map was made, but now we've reverted back to this one, because apparently this was accepted at one time, is what I understood, all right? So, this one has a different legend, but me being the realtor that I am, talking the private side, I know that some of the drawings are wrong in relation to some of the areas, okay, and have for years. And of course, I know, looking at this one, it doesn't have the little C2 colors up here, but it's got some colors down here that definitely differ from what this one was on the way the zoning was, and is, okay? And according to some of the things that have got passed, specifically on the south part of town, which I can give you each instance, it's not zoned the same. And so, somehow, this is going to, this is going to turn into kind of a big deal to me, because I need the zoning map that is right, and so does the city of Guymon.
Okay.
And so, I'm, I'm a little hung up, but I was a little perturbed when I found out, not, not a fault of any individual, but a fault maybe of the city for, if, if they kicked these out, which I definitely got from past city managers and stuff, and I feel like I've really led a lot of people astray by giving this, saying, hey, if you want to get in here, you can always request for a zoning change or a variance thing, of course, now we don't have the variance thing to head that off and hit the city council, okay? And so, I'm, I'm a little bit lost, kind of knowing the planning, we're going through all these, what I'm going to say is the bigger city plans, and I'm trying to get a good handle on it to help people.
Okay.
But to help the place where I was born, okay? And some of this is just getting beyond trying to keep up with, between the paperwork and all the state statutes and stuff like that, I'm trying to do my best to help citizens, you know, and I'm doing my best to help the city council, and so.
Chairman Tuttle, could I, could I answer that?
Absolutely, take off of that.
Okay.
Here they are.
May.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Here's the one I've been using for 15 years.
When I came in May, we, this was on the wall, one from Myers Engineering, this one that you just, that you just showed.
Okay.
Obviously, well, it's got some mistakes.
Absolutely.
Okay, and so, the last, the other one that you had that had the watermark on it, that in 1994.
That's it, that's the watermark, this is not the watermark.
Okay.
This is the one I've been sharing with developers, builders, residents, councilmen.
This is the last zoning map that was officially adopted by the city. This is in 1994, 1997, eight, okay?
When was it, Marissa?
Eighty-seven, I believe.
Eighty-seven?
It should say.
It has to be on the legend.
Nineteen ninety-eight. Three twenty-five, nine years.
Three twenty-five?
Right there on the, right there on the.
Okay.
I was, and when I found that, and.
And this one was nine twenty-four twelve, just the two thousand.
And when I took a look at that, when that, when, when we found that last zoning map that was done in ninety-eight, and I sat down and compared it to the one, the other one, okay, I was as horrified as you were.
Okay.
Okay, that's not right, and that's incorrect, and that's not, that's not acceptable. And so, how, we need, we, we need, there's two things I just want to cover, we need to obviously fix that. So what we have done is, city staff has gone back, and we have looked at every single ordinance for rezoning that goes back to that date, all of them, every one.
That's about all you can do.
And, and, as we find those, we are updating the map. Now, in mid-December, we're going to try to have, we're going to try to have that done, okay? So, we're going to have a map that has all the ordinances updated on it, so it's up to date as far as what actions city council has taken to rezone property. And then when I get that, I'm going to make sure that, I'm going to do some fieldwork and try to make sure that it's as absolutely correct as we can. I'm, by January, we're hoping the January meeting, or the February meeting at the latest, we will have a map to come back to be adopted by the city, and that will be the one that will be correct. Now, am I going to tell you that there's not going to be a lot or so that still may need, you know, a little, we might miss one or two? No, of course not. But it'll be, it'll be one that we can bring to you, it'll be as accurate as possible, we will get that adopted by the city, and then we will all have an official zoning map that will be put on the website, put on, out everywhere, so everybody will be able to click on it and know it.
Well, that's okay.
Now, the second thing that I will tell you is that anybody who wants a zoning verification letter, if they want it in writing what a particular property is owned, I'll research it, I'll write the letter myself, I'll sign it, I'll give it to you, and that's, that's.
And that's what we just did.
That's right.
That's right. So, my, my whole thing is, is like, back here, just for everybody out here knows this, we've got Majestic Ranch out here, and they don't have any of the property written on here, okay? And to go back to this, I would think that in my opinion, I would rather be using the one that, that the city has told me that this is the fact, be regardless of who told me, okay? Because I use this in my business, okay? And I do that as a benefit to the city, but to the clients that try to come into Guymon, Oklahoma. So, I'm thinking, our map needs, we need to have a map like PD did yesterday.
It needs fixed, it needs, we got it as soon as possible.
Well, I don't think this is the way we need to be going either.
We're.
Because this thing, I can show you one app, a lot of things that are totally wrong with this thing.
I agree.
All that stuff on the south side of Maine, when I've got this over here, you, we've got some real problems.
I agree.
And so.
I agree with you.
Before the planning and zoning commission really can do a good job, the first thing I think we need is a good zoning map, and we need to put the due diligence on that yesterday.
We have, we have, we are, it's at the top of my list.
I, okay.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
I didn't.
Well, I don't know if this is an action I.
Well, what I'd like to propose is that you, as planning director, is that correct, your title?
Yeah, my, my, one of my duties is to be your, your, your staff, your advisor.
And I don't know if we, if this requires a motion or not, but what I'd like to see is maybe you propose to us an action plan with new guidelines, zoning regulations to include a proposed building code.
With options on the building code.
That we could take a look at and make recommendations to the city council.
Okay, now, again, the, the building code is a separate animal from the zoning code. You don't have the ability to amend the building code, you can't, you don't have the authority to do that.
Who does?
We adopt, well, the state has adopted the IBC that Oklahoma is supposed to enforce it. So, those are standards that we cannot have, we can't mess, we can't, we can't mess with that.
You're telling me that all cities in the state of Oklahoma have adopted the same building code?
The state has adopted the 2015 building code, our city ordinance has adopted the 2009 code. Now, when we go out, when we go out in the field to do.
Out of compliance for you.
Right, now, just as we did the last time we updated, in 2012, we adopted the 2009. We're going into 2018, there's two things we can do. One is to adopt the 2015.
State.
IBC, as, as done by the state, or perhaps another way to look at it would be to do an ordinance that if the state adopts a new international building code, say in 2020, we automatically adopt it without having to redo an ordinance ourselves, does that make, does that, do you follow?
I'd see what, what.
So, those are.
I'd hate for it to be automatic when the size of the town has got me concerned in comparison to the other towns that are in Oklahoma.
That's, that's a policy, that's a discussion we're having right now, which way is the best way to go about it.
That's why I kind of wanted you to hear some of the feedback.
And I'll bring that to you.
So, I think what needs to happen is, I think this zoning ordinance needs to be brought up today.
I agree.
Brought to us, reviewed.
And kick it around so we can make the best decision for Guymon.
I agree. And, and that's exactly.
Mr. Lindsay.
That's exactly, as I told you, Mr. Boring, exactly what we're going to do.
I would like to see that happen.
It's not going to be tomorrow.
Right.
It's going to take a little while.
Well, we have too many developers that are wanting to come in this area, and they have no idea as to where, I mean, not so much where to look, they know where to look, but they're being told too many different things.
Well, okay, I hear that, but there's always an option to have, or you, or anybody on this board, or anybody sitting out there. Got a question, call, call me, call.
I did.
And we sat down for an hour and a half today, I think, and that's the probably the process should work.
And you know, you're personally aware of the thing that kind of blew up on us, and how the city was guiding them to a certain area, okay? Three in particular, neither here nor there, I'm trying to get ahead with those guys, and that was one of the ones that I presented that.
We are all here to be open to the public, transparent with the public, and if somebody has a question, they can come and knock on the door, and I'd be happy to sit down and talk with them.
Now, see, that's going to be the easiest way for me.
So would Mr. Harris, so would Mr. Matt, so would anybody, Larry Matt, anybody, we are here for you.
Well, with, what I got hit with today, this, that letter that I pitched you at last Tuesday, you know, that I was trying to get the answer, but whatever, it doesn't matter, that is going to be, until I get a good zoning map, the only way that I'm going to find out how the city stands on the zoning thing. So I'm going to have to give five bucks every time to eliminate the question of how it is zoned. When before, I could pretty well help people determine what the zonings are and how to carry on from there.
And if you want me to tell you I like that, I don't like that either, but we're going to fix it.
Do we, can we take a question from?
That's up to you.
Okay.
If you want to give somebody who's here in the public like two or three minutes to speak, I guess you could do that.
Mike, Lindsay, do you have something to say?
Mike, your turn.
I propose that the building code, that the building code, or, 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 again.
Very well stated.
Okay, but again, that's a different animal. We cannot, because of health, safety, public welfare, we can't go out and look at the electrical section of the IBC and say, oh gee, well, you know, we don't think that's right, we're not, we're not going to follow that, we can't do that, we can't, we have to follow it. We can't have anything less restrictive, but on any ordinance, any ordinance that we enforce, and we could have a more restrictive statement.
Well, I believe it's possible to take what we've had and improve on it, rather than adopt something that's overwhelming for the size of city that we have, and I think they could be complimentary, they're not trying to get around the law, what they're trying to do is be in compliance with the law, to keep it at a level that is.
I.
For the size of our town, just like Mike stated, the Dunkins, the Lawtons, the, you know, they, they're just totally different than Guymon, Oklahoma.
I hear, I hear all, I hear all that, and I'm listening, but we're a little afield from the ninety-eight zoning, that's not, I'm not here to talk about the IBC today, but I will tell you, when we take a look at the Unified Development Code, take a look, we will examine about putting it on one document, okay?
Okay, I guess we're finished with item three?
Yes.
Good, item four, discussion on the role IBTS has assumed under the current contract with the city of Guymon, including powers granted to IBTS concerning planning and zoning.
In your backup that we, I provided you, Mr. Chairman, we copied the part of the contract between IBTS and the city as far as what services, what planning and zoning services we provide to the city. It's under task C1, page A10 to A11. Contractually, that's what we provide to the city, and that's what we do, and that's the services that we provide you every day. And so, I would, I would suggest that that is the answer to your question. I don't have, I don't know what else I can add to that as far as what services we provide to the city in terms of planning and zoning services, it's right there in black and white.
I just have one statement about that, Chairman.
Yeah.
On that, C1, three, my concern with that is, it reads, Planning and Zoning Ordinance Review, says the contractor, referring to IBTS, will review and recommend revisions to the current zoning code. Contractor will develop, implement, manage, and conduct planning and zoning activities for the city of Guymon. That gets back to my question, is what's the purpose of this planning commission if that's the role of the contractor slash IBTS?
The contractor will provide information. The contractor will provide information concerning zoning to the general public, builders, developers, mayor, city council, and Planning and Zoning Commission. In addition, contractor will develop and recommend zoning policies. So every zoning policy that we look at compared to, including what we did there, that is going to come before you. And you will take a look at our recommendations, you'll take a look at our report. My, my job is to be your advisor, okay? Like, when we have a rezoning come in, we take a look at it, we take a look at the application, we take a look at the comp plan, we'll take a look at the zoning ordinance, we'll take a look at every code we have, and I will develop a recommendation for you. Now, if you take that, that's fine. That's good. If you don't take it, that's okay too. Now, if we're not looking at things the same way over a period of time, then we need to have a little work session and talk about that. So again, your role as a Planning and Zoning Commission is to, is to examine planning, land use items, and policies and direction that the city is going, that the city faces today, and what they're gonna face tomorrow. And under what this says, you are the advisory arm to the City Council. They depend on you to listen to the public, flesh out issues, talk to the public and develop an opinion that you have communicated to the City Council for them to take final action on.
I hate to beat a dead horse, but I'd like to get back to why the Planning Commission as an entity wasn't advised on the sign ordinance, why we did not have any advisory.
Yes, go ahead, David.
I thought he covered it pretty clear. Sign ordinance is not in the purview of zoning. So we would not bring to you traffic speed ordinance because it's not in the purview of zoning.
I believe, though, when I asked the question that we're under the direction to give advisement in this book, the correct, the answer was yes.
Sign ordinance is not under the purview of zoning. Zoning has nothing to do with zoning.
It is in this book. Would you like for me to show you?
No.
Six pages of it.
The, the sign ordinance that was in there, and I believe if you look at the new sign ordinance, it'll say the old ordinances are gone, they're taken out, restricted, and replaced with the new one. So if there are stuff in there, the other one replaced the new ordinance.
Yeah. You removed it without any advisement of this commission?
It's not in the powers of planning and zoning for a sign ordinance. How it got in there, I don't know, I haven't gone back and reviewed that, but if you look at what the Planning and Zoning Commission has authority to approve and advise on, what your specific purpose is for, that is not in there. And so it's not, it's not relevant, and that's why it wasn't.
I see where you're coming from.
That's, that's why it wasn't brought to you.
That's what we tried to.
Same thing with the food truck ordinance, it doesn't have anything to do with the things normally under the purview of yours.
Those are strictly permitting issues when, when a food truck ordinance comes in. We, we didn't have any regulatory standard for how to do a food truck. Well, now we do. But food trucks yesterday and food trucks today, the permit for those never come before the Planning and Zoning Commission. That's why we didn't bring it here.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Under original 1998 amended zoning ordinance, page 643102-3, directly cites a zoning law under this section of signs. Where more restrictive in respect to location, purpose, size, or height of signs, and limitation of zoning laws that affect, require light and ventilation requirements, occupancy of land, shall take precedence over the regulations of this code. So how can you tell me that this Planning and Zoning Commission has nothing to do with a sign ordinance, per se?
You don't review sign permits. You don't review sign applications. If someone doesn't agree with the finding we have on it, it doesn't come to this board.
Correct.
That's what I'm saying.
What board would that go to?
Board of zoning adjustment.
We have one.
Well, we're going to have to reconstitute.
Not currently.
But they are.
Currently, but we will have to reconstitute that. And what we have told, I'm sorry, if I, if, what, we have had a couple of people come in and ask for variance applications, okay, to go before the Board of Zoning Adjustment. We told them, we have to reconstitute that board, hold on, we got their contact information, and when the board is reconstituted, we will call them, and then they will be able to apply.
Excellent. So who picks that commission, if I may ask, do you know?
I'm sorry.
Who would select those on the committee?
Well, the city council with the approval, with the advice of the rest, the mayor, with the advice of, of the rest of the council makes the appointment.
So they all would be involved?
Just, just as they do with any other board, including this one.
On the IBTS part, and I think David explained it, we're the day-to-day activities. We're the day-to-day activities. If there are issues with the property or issues with zoning or changes, that's when the advice comes on policy changes that would go to the first council. You mentioned about not having enough zone for what we need in the future, and part of that is, if I own a piece of property, and it's already R1, and I have a house on it, it stays R1 until I decide to change. If I wanna tear down my house, you can't make me change it to C2. Council can't make me change to C2 if it's, because it's a non-existing. But if I wanna build a convenience store on that house, now I have to go and request a rezone in which you would look at it and say, we don't wanna convenience store there because it is R1. The area around it, that's when you decide, but the person that owns the property ultimately holds the key to where some of this zoning is for future land. If you have some land, you want it to be a certain thing, you can request a rezone and come by the board and we'll request it. That's up to the, at that point. But if it's already there, there's a lot of land out there that's residential, or it's ag, or it's something, and in the future, it may be an industry, but we can't make them zone it industry because we feel, we think this is for the industry on their land. So part of that stuff will drag on for years. And on the zoning map, all the research has been done, every ordinance is already in the file, Taylor's working on updating the map, we'll have that by the 15th, we already have it planned, but we've already even got a schedule for when it'll be on the council to approve.
So you've got it on there for the council to approve?
We've already talked to the city manager and talked about the date that it would be on there. We'll do the second, the second meeting in January, if it ends approved, that would give us time to review it and talk about it beforehand.
Now, will that come before the Planning Commission? I'm asking you, David.
I don't know that it would need to come before the Planning Commission, because you've already approved it.
Huh? A new zoning map?
No. The individual things that are gonna change the map.
Well, that we had.
The Planning Commission already did it, council approved the thing. We have the research that shows Planning Commission recommended council adopt it.
Oh, I know the council's approved it.
So, so that's what, that's what the map changed. So you, there's no reason to bring back something that you've already done and may have been built 20 years ago anyway.
Okay. Well, just in relation to that, if you go off the water stain map and implement that stuff on top of what you got here, you're gonna have a mess. You're gonna have a mess, okay?
Okay.
I want you to know that and hear it from me, because I know where the mess is on a lot of it.
And we're cleaning up a mess from what, Matt, team, what?
It might save the city money in the long run if it got some feedback.
Yeah.
You know, maybe you can call the public in, maybe Joe Ballard will know how this stuff is designated, but he'd probably come and maybe ask me, and I'd try to give him a logical answer, you know? Or anybody, because that's what they do. They, they come in looking for real estate, can I put a trailer here, or can I put this here?
The, the reason, the reason that we do not have a map on our website is because we don't have a map that we trust.
Well, I can sure understand that.
I'm not gonna put anything out and let it go on the website if we know there's problems with it.
Right, right now.
So we don't have one on there, and that is specifically why.
Yeah, you don't have a valid map.
Yeah, so if you come with specific issue, if a developer, a person comes and says, I'm on this lot, what can I do? We'll handle that case by case, and we'll do the research to make sure we're right. And that's the appropriate thing to do, and they should come straight to us anyway. That's what we're here to do.
That's what we do.
Any other discussion on item four?
No.
Okay. We'll go to item five, discussion on possible actions to approve the 2018 meeting's schedule.
What?
Yeah, what we've done is, uh, proposed a schedule for next year's meeting, it would be the same dates. If we have a holiday on a Tuesday or so, we've tried to account for that to make sure we don't have any conflicts. So it is, it is there, it's there for your review and approval.
Now, this is Board of the Justice. Is it, have you got Planning Commission?
The very last page. He's got their own one in his book there.
Can you get the one more on here? Sure. This one right here.
In your, in your backup that you have in the booklet today, it says Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yeah, just, you see what I got?
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's a.
But the one, the one that's in your booklet.
You're welcome to show up at 10:00.
We, we.
Well, I'd be.
We, we, we've had a lot this month with things on the agenda, things being pulled off, things being added, so we apologize for that, Mr. Curtis, but the schedule is there in your backup for your review and consideration.
Okay. Is any discussion concerning the ordinance?
One, one thing that I would like to take into consideration is moving that time from 5:30 to 6:00.
I mean, I don't, I don't care when you have it.
I've never had a problem with that.
So, no, I just think it works more flexible with work schedules.
Get something out of Chet, you've been so talking here.
It fits either way.
The other Chet.
I'm indifferent, 5:30 or 6:00. 6:00 is fine if you prefer that.
Make a motion to move it.
That's what you want to do. That's the role of the board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to move the 2018 calendar year meeting time from 5:30 PM to 6:00 PM.
Okay, I have a motion to change the time to 6:00 PM. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Do a second. That's it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
It's gonna be changed to 6:00 PM. Thanks, Austin. Okay, item six, discussion on possible action to recommend appointments to City Council for a three-year term on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Three of you, your terms are, are up, Commissioner Curtis, Commissioner Boring, Chairman Tuttle, Mr. Boring, and Mr. Curtis have, have given us the form to fill out requesting to be reappointed, and we will take that to.
Council.
To council. And if you wanna be reappointed, you need your, your, your form as well.
You have a form?
It's in the very back of your book, sir.
It's, it's right there.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to recommend Mr. Curtis and yourself, the chairman of this commission, for, to continue its service on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I don't think I could recommend myself.
We, we did it as one item, so you could do all three as one motion.
And I'd recommend Austin stays on here for participation.
Make a motion to recommend to the four City Council to continue our service to the zoning and planning commission.
Okay, I have a motion for the three of us to continue. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And we will give your forms to the city clerk, who will forward it to City Council for action.
Okay, great. Item seven, new business?
We have no business. I mean, we have no new business.
Mr. Chairman, I have one item that I'd like to bring forth that after discussion today, I'm not sure if it falls underneath our prevy, but we had a member of our community that's present that received a cease and desist order based upon citing our zoning And I would like to discuss that if we could, please.
Okay. Here's a copy of.
I have it. I would, just one thing I would point out is that, again, a carport that has been issued a, you know, a letter to cease and desist, his, um, his avenue is to, if he wants to keep it the way it is, he would pursue a variance to the Board of Zoning Adjustment when that board is reconstituted. But today, this particular, this particular carport, and if you want, if the gentleman is here to talk for a couple of minutes, we can, we can certainly listen to that. This item is not on the agenda, so there's nothing that we can do about it today, and actually, what action has to be taken is the purview of another board, not yours.
I would like to make a comment, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
This individual received a cease and desist citing our current zoning ordinance. This, this city does not fall, and we do not have an adopt, a current adopted charter. With that being said, state law, to my understanding, supersedes what we have in effect. According to Title 1143109-2, paragraph A, I do not believe it is, falls underneath the city's prevy to deny a carport being built, because under this paragraph, it says not included under the definition of a residential building permit or a single-family or duplex carport, patio cover, storage building, accessory building, pool, or fence. My suggestion is that this be clarified with the city attorney, because according to Title 11, the state law, I believe it's my understanding that an individual in this community does not have to obtain a permit to erect a carport so long as it meets all of our current codes, as in setbacks and so forth.
Again, through you, Mr. Chairman, a carport does, one, it needs a building permit because it beats the definition of a structure. Two, a carport is an accessory structure, and under the definition of accessory structure, it says a user structure customarily incidental, appropriate, and subordinate to the principal use of a building, or to the principal use of land in which it is located upon the same lot herewith, so.
And where is that?
That is in the definition section of, of the zoning code. So again, we will take your suggestion and contact the city attorney on that, Mr. Boring, and get a, and get that, I'll get a memo out to you. But this particular carport, just for your information, it does not meet any standard of the code in terms of setback, in terms of height, in terms of meeting the definition of an accessory structure, and in terms of how many recreational vehicles you're allowed to have on a piece of property, and also is that on every lot, you can't, you must have a principal structure on a lot in order to have an accessory structure. So you, you cannot have an accessory structure sitting on a lot by itself without a principal structure. If, if that was the case, we did a plat for a subdivision in R1, in theory, you could just have a 20-lot subdivision, be 20-lot garages, and that's not, that's not the interpret, that's not what accessory structure is supposed to be.
How would that apply, David, when you have a person buys a house and buys a lot next door for the simple purpose of building them a garage or a shop?
If that was the case.
Separate lot, no main.
The easy solution would be to do a lot line adjustment.
A lot line adjustment?
Uh huh.
So it's one lot.
So it's one lot instead of two.
Well, I just wanna point out, I mean, it does define a residential building permit shall be defined for this section as any building permit for a single-family or a duplex residential structure, and shall include construction of a new structure, remodel of an existing structure, and the addition to an existing structure, not included under the definition of residential building permits as a single-family or duplex carport.
Okay. What I will, what I will do is I will take your note, I will send a memo to Mr. Petty asking for, there's. asking for, there's, you believe there's a discrepancy here, and so I will ask for an answer, and then I will, I will send you that by, by, I, I will, I will send you his finding by email, if that will, if that will meet your needs.
It will, and it, it also, Mr. Chairman, if I may, it concerns me, I had a list of questions to ask, but I'll get to the point, it concerns me that we have a building inspector sending a cease and desist letter to our, to a member of our community that already started the erection of this building, and then all of a sudden, out of nowhere, gets told to stop. This letter also, what I'd like to know is if he, if Mr. Masteller talked to any legal counsel about before sending this out, because in this letter, it's demand for him to remove this structure within 60 days, which almost turns this into an order. And you can't send out a letter like this unless it's signed by a judge.
I, I would respectfully disagree with you on that, but we can, we can certainly sit down and talk about that. We have the ability, in the interest of health, safety, and public welfare, if a structure is being constructed, one, without a permit, two, not in conformity with the standards of the ordinance, we can issue a cease and desist order in order to stop construction.
You know, I can't find one area in our zoning...
Until, until, until a remedy can be found.
Well, I can't find one area in our zoning book whatsoever that mentions the word carport.
Well, we'll take a look at that, and again, when we revise the zoning ordinance, certainly we should have that in there. But a carport, by its nature, is an accessory structure, it's not a principal use of the building. A principal use in R1 is a single-family home. So, it stands to reason that in order to have an accessory structure such as a carport, you have to have a house on lot where the carport is going to sit. And it has to be smaller than subordinate to the principal use. So, it cannot be larger than the principal use, it can't be higher, it must be subordinate, by definition, be subordinate to the principal use. But I will get you an answer to, to your, to your, to your question.
And I just think, just one other note, as being a code enforcement officer, it is kind of an extensionist to this commission, and it does reflect on us as a commission. And I think city council or city management needs to take a look into this matter on how it was handled.
I'd be happy to, to, to do that.
Mr. Ballard, would you have any comments?
I would, I would... You know, adding a carport is a benefit to this community because it does add tax revenue.
Okay.
He said he'd take a look into it.
It'd be great.
Yeah, that's, that should satisfy.
The other...
Thank you.
Okay, item eight. Do I hear a motion?
A motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
All opposed? Thanks, Austin. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you for the discussion, Mr. Boring. I think all of that's always healthy to have a discussion.
Definitely.
Thank you.